Well, I'm gonna go ahead and call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Thursday evening, March 18th, 2021. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. If anyone intends to record any portion of this meeting or take any photographs during this meeting, could you please identify yourself at this time by raising your hand or unmuting yourself and identifying yourself? Okay, seeing none, I would announce that the members of the Board who are participating remotely this evening include myself, Mary Power, Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. That is actually a requirement that we have to say every time, even though it seems pretty obvious from how this is going tonight. So, this evening, the Board, we're gonna take up a couple warrant articles. We're gonna talk a little bit about our COVID testing facility, and then we are going to continue our discussion about FY22, our forecast, our budget situation. I do not see, Joe and Bill, I do not see the approval of minutes on our agenda. I know those are ready, but I'm going to maybe ask that we put those on for Tuesday since I don't think they were posted. That would be great. So with that, we're gonna actually take up two warrant articles. Article D, which is the report of the Personnel Board, and Article E, which is the salary of town officers. And this evening, we are joined by our Director of Human Resources, Lisa Campbell. We are joined by the Chair of the Personnel Board, David Pace, and we are joined by another member of the Personnel Board, Courtney Orwig. Tom, who's best to tee up Article D?
Say, probably Mr. Pace.
Okay. David, welcome, welcome.
Thank you, Mary.
I'll turn it over to you for Article D.
Thanks, Mary. I'll try and hit both at the same time. Thanks for being here. Good evening, everybody, and I'm happy to be here and present Article B, Article E, and the Personnel Board Report to you tonight. It was a busy year for the Personnel Board. I think a complicated, crazy year like it was for everybody else because of COVID, but I think it was a very productive year at the end of it all. Just before I get into it, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge and thank the other members of the Personnel Board. In addition to myself and Courtney, who's here tonight, there's also Russ Kahn and Jack Manning. There was Samara Million, who was on the Board through the end of last year. She stepped down as of December 31st last year, was a great contributor, real asset to the town. We're sorry to see her go, but her time was up, and appointed in her place was Joe Kelly, who started on the Board at the beginning of January. So we're back to a full five-member Board. So I just wanna thank them for all the work that they put in.
Hey, David, just before, I don't mean to interrupt, but I do believe Mr. Kelly has joined, and I might just ask if you could call your Board to order since you now have a quorum. Thanks so much.
I guess I will call to order the Personnel Board for a meeting on this December 18th, 7:00 PM in the evening, a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Do I need to do anything else? I think that's it, right?
You're good.
All right. So I don't wanna... Thanks, Mary, for bringing that up. I didn't see that. So I'll just touch on a few matters in Article D and the Personnel Board Report. First is, touch on collective bargaining, which, as you know, is one of the primary functions that we, the Personnel Board, conducts collective bargaining on behalf of the Board of Selectmen with the six unions that represent town employees. So essentially, all town employees, union employees that are not at the school. Last year, there were five collective bargaining agreements that were set to expire as of June 30th last year, which is, it's a good number, not uncommon. We were at the kickoff stage for all of these negotiations when COVID hit back last March, almost a year ago, March 13th. And that obviously created some issues and challenges. Doing collective bargaining, especially five of them in a normal environment, is not easy, and it's time-consuming doing it in the middle of a pandemic with a lot of uncertainty, and you can't meet with people face-to-face, presented new challenges. So after meeting with you, the Board of Selectmen, as well as the town administration and department heads, we kind of decided to follow an approach, proposed to the unions, an approach that would, in essence, maintain the status quo for a year, proposed to the unions that we do a one-year extension of their current agreement with a cost of living increase of 2% and effectively postpone the serious negotiations for a year. Four of the five unions accepted, and so those agreements were put into place last year as one-year extensions, and we're beginning shortly collective bargaining with these unions this year. One union did not accept, and so we've been in the middle of kind of ongoing negotiations with them, which will begin to pick up more now as we can get willing. Hopefully, with the vaccines getting out there, we'll be able to get back face-to-face and do more of these meetings. So that did take a lot of time, not as much as expected. Kind of our second big function that the Personnel Board reports, probably our most important function, is to administer the town bylaw, personnel bylaw, I should say, and the salary and classification plan. You know, it's up to us every year to kind of manage that, and it applies to pretty much all of the town employees, 80-plus or so, who are not members of unions, we don't get involved with the school. And, you know, every year, there's a bunch of matters that come up under the personnel bylaw there, whether it's reclassifications of jobs, creating new job positions, new hires, matters like that. So each time it comes up, we evaluate the position, evaluate the grading, look at the compensation relative to internal and external equity, and review it, and then make changes as necessary. And so this year is no exception, as we had, as outlined in the report, a number of different reclassifications, job creations, et cetera. Probably the most important thing we did this year was conduct, or I should say conclude, a very comprehensive review and modification of that salary plan and classification schedule. It's probably, as I said, the primary function of the Personnel Board. We periodically review jobs from time to time over the years as they come up, as either a new job is created or we look at it needs to be reclassified for some reason. But it's really the first time in 20 years that the Personnel Board has undertaken such a comprehensive review of all the positions in town and the wage and classification system. It's a pretty labor-intensive, very difficult task, and I just wanna thank the town administration for their support, in particular, Michelle Montzegor and Lisa Campbell for their support in doing this. As I said, it's very labor-intensive. We did employ an outside consultant, Gov HR, to help us through the process. They work with many of the towns in Massachusetts in this area. But, you know, the Personnel Board, with Michelle and Lisa's help, was able to go through all 80-plus positions to look at the job descriptions, review them with all the employees to make sure they're up to date, see where changes needed to be made. In some cases, as I said, they hadn't been reviewed in 20 years, so it took some time. But we had to update that, look at the grading, look at the compensation for each of these. And as you know, probably the most difficult part of all of this is compensation. For some reason, that's where everybody's focus is, right? We all are, and no matter who we work for or who works with us. And just point out, I mean, you know, our obligation under the personnel bylaw is to really kind of keep abreast of what's happening in other towns in terms of pay and benefits, and to make sure that we pay a fair and equitable salary to our employees. And we use, as you know, a 20-town comparison. We have a list of 20 towns in the Massachusetts that we compare ourselves to, and our goal, our objective philosophy, however you want to term it, is a place employees in Hingham just above the median in that 20-town comparison. And that applies whether they're union or non-union, so it applied to all of these individual employees as well. And so as part of the plan, we had to review each of these positions, look at the comparison across the 20 towns to see how they felt in that comparison, look for internal equity, and then determine whether there needed to be adjustment in the salary. And sometimes, we are required, as we do in union negotiations as well, to make equity adjustments in positions if we see we've fallen behind. And what the report did show is we'd fallen below the median in a number of positions, so we had to make some, we were proposing to make a number of equity adjustments to those positions to bring the employees in line with our 20-town comparisons. I would say the total of all of those was not insignificant. It was about $140,000 in total adjustments that would be made. But I think we have a much better system. I think we feel confident now that we are in line with our 20 towns, that we have a fair and equitable plan, that the jobs have been updated and reflect current, and put a program in place that we think will be very effective going forward to make sure that we're compensating employees appropriately and can effectively administer the bylaw. So I think that was a big undertaking and a big accomplishment for the Board. And again, thanks to Michelle, Lisa, and all the folks in town who were a big part of that, including the Board of Selectmen and your support through the process. So that was a major undertaking this year. Boy, the last thing I'll mention in Article IV is that we would be, you know, after consultation with the Board and the town, recommending a 2% general wage increase for the upcoming fiscal year, beginning July 1st, 2021. And that's Article D. Article E, just quickly, is really the salaries of a number of town employees, including the Board of Selectmen. I could go through it. There's really been no change in that for as long as I can remember, and probably since before I can remember in what folks get paid. And so, other than any employee who falls within the salary plan itself, like the town clerk, so I can run through that if you'd like, but it's...
You know, David, we have a number of people on the call, and, you know, I know, I never really knew like how much people were paid, and, you know, maybe if you could just run through the details of Article V, that would be great.
Sure, I'll do that. Happy to do that. You know, we fixed the salaries of certain town officers, so one being the Board of Selectmen or the Selectmen. Each Selectman is paid at an annual rate of $2,000, except the Chair, which gets a $2,500 annual compensation rate. We pay assessors, get paid an annual rate of $1,800 each, and the Chair receives an annual rate of $2,000 during their term. Town clerk, which is a full-time, I guess you could say, employee, is compensated in accordance with the salary scale I was just discussing. They were graded at, I believe, grade 15. On the current salary scale, it will be, we're adjusting the salary scale, so it'll be 13, not a change or a decrease in salary, just a different structure, so it'll be in the same range. And then the municipal light board is paid at a rate of $214 each. And so those, as I said, I've been, I think I've been on the Personnel Board 14 or 15 years now, and none of those have changed in 14, 15 years and probably many years before then. So that's, we will put that forward again this year as rate.
Thank you. Joe, questions for David with respect to Article IV or Article V?
Yes. Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm not sure if this is a question of substance or procedure. I noticed you're recommending changes to the personnel bylaw. Does that mean that when there are classification changes, is that affected through a bylaw change?
Essentially, yes, Joe, yes. Yeah, it's an amendment to the bylaw or the schedule, which is the salary and classification schedule, yes.
Yep. And I noticed, you've reported that there are 88 job descriptions were evaluated for internal and external equity. That is a big task.
Yes, it is.
So thank you for doing that. Let me just see if I have other questions. So, and with respect to Article E, the salaries I just reviewed, so there's been, traditionally, there's no inflation adjustment. They've just been flat for decades. Is that essentially how they've been treated?
They have, although I will say, there is probably, I'm gonna say, at least 10 years ago, Joe, we did do a review of, you know, basically a 20-town comparison. At that time, it was a Selectmen compensation rates, maybe another, I can't remember, and they were pretty consistent with what other 20 towns were paying. So we kind of apply the same philosophy for those as we do the towns. And just real quick, I do wanna, the 88, you know, the town reviewing all its employees was a big task, and I'd be remiss if I didn't, again, point out Michelle and Lisa, who kind of really drove that process, and thank them for their efforts on that, too. I just wanna make sure that they get credit, or lion's share of the credit for that.
I've got no other questions. Thank you.
Bill, questions for David about either article?
I wanna thank David and the Personnel Board for all their work and putting this together and all that they do for collective bargaining, especially this past year. I thought, David, I thought your plan, how you approached COVID was very well done, and I was glad to hear that four of the five unions worked with you on that. Only question, only question had, Mary, and I think Tom has answered it, was whether or not we can vote on E, because we are voting on our own salaries, but Tom, how counsel is okay in that?
Yeah, thank you, Bill. I did just speak with John just now. We do it every year, but it's a question I'm not sure I've heard, and he said, yes, there are many reasons why, one of which was the rule of necessity, among others. But he said there were many others that he would be happy to go over with us when we have more time.
Okay, why don't you clear it? All right, thank you. Nothing else.
Great. I just wanna thank Lisa, Michelle, Jack Manning, and Courtney. I know all of you worked on the wage and classification, and I think that, you know, as David mentioned, this is something we haven't done for 20 years, and as part of our desire to be an employee of choice, really important to stay current on those things. I would also just point out that the increase contemplated in Article D is an increase to bring people who for many years have not been paid at the 51st percentile up to that level. And so, again, I think that's very important in terms of what we strive for as a town. I would also just point out that, you know, as an employer that has a 50/50 benefit-sharing arrangement, paying salaries in the 51st percentile is a little bit challenging because that total compensation package is what a lot of people look at. And I really, you know, for that reason, am so appreciative to the Personnel Board. You have forged strong relationships with the union. Our negotiations are transparent. We start by laying out the five-year forecast and saying, here's what we've got to work with. We've established good partnerships over the years, and David, I appreciate yours, and Jack, and Russ's efforts as well, to welcome and orient new members to the Personnel Board, because the next year coming up is going to be very challenging for the, you know, for the five of you. So again, you know, my appreciation and thanks. For those who, you know, are interested, a copy of the Personnel Board Report is actually contained in the warrant, so folks can take a look at that when the warrant arrives at their home. Is there anyone who has a question or wishes to make a comment about Article D or E before the Board takes a vote?
May I, Mary?
Pardon me?
May I?
Yes, yes, Ms. Montzegor.
Just wanted to take a moment. I know everyone's already said it, but to thank David, Russell, Courtney, Jack, Joe, Marie and Samara before them, this was a real team effort. Lisa and I really appreciate your support as we went through this process over the last few years, and the support of the Board of Selectmen, too. We're in the process of rolling it out now. It's still gonna be a big effort, but thank you again for helping us through this.
Thank you, Michelle. Joe or Bill, I would accept motions.
Okay, I'll do the first one. I would move to recommend favorable action of Article D.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary, aye. Bill, how about E?
I'd make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article E.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary, aye. Terrific. David, Courtney, Lisa, Michelle, thank you all again.
Thank you.
The next item of business on our agenda is an extension of the license agreement with Empathy LLC for the temporary COVID-19 testing site at 308 Cushing Street. As those of you who have video on can see, we're joined by Jackson Stone, who is actually coming to us, I believe, from the Hingham Middle School, where he is actually working with his team to vaccinate many of our Hingham Public School teachers. So, Jackson, welcome. Thank you for being here. Tom, do you or Michelle want to tee this up, or do we go right to Jackson?
Tonight is the Michelle Montzegor night.
Okay.
Tee it up and hand it over to Jackson.
Terrific. Michelle?
Sure. So just to summarize, we had initially signed a three-month license agreement with Empathy with Jackson back in December, and Selectmen Fisher helped us put that into place, and he and his team started doing COVID tests at 308 Cushing Street, Mondays through Saturdays, from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, with a preference for Hingham residents and town employees in the morning hours. He definitely, that team has been meeting a community need, but as we've been watching the numbers in terms of total tests and total costs of the town, some of the need has started to decrease over the last several weeks, which is a good thing. So we've gone from about 250-ish plus tests a day to maybe closer to the 150-ish test range, and we did see a spike around February School Vacation Week. We expect to see one around April School Vacation Week. But as the needs diminishing, we're proposing moving from six days a week to four days a week. So in the new agreement, we're looking at Mondays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. We looked at some of the numbers Jackson provided to see which testing days were most popular and least popular. Mondays were the most popular, Fridays were the least, so we're trying to adjust the schedule that way, and Jackson has talked to his team, and he can make this new schedule work. We're proposing to do it for another, up to three-month period. As we, you know, the good news is the tests are going down and the vaccines are going up, but for the meantime, we still think that there is a need to provide this service in town.
Thank you. Jackson, anything to add?
I'll just add that, you know, to, as of March 2nd, Michelle hopefully put together at the table to take a look at how many people we had tested or how many tests we'd done over time, and we tested 13,000 people through March 2nd. And I know we vaccinated, I think, 70 folks, the vast majority of whom were school teachers. And, you know, it's been, I think it's been, hopefully, meeting an important service, meeting a need, and it's been, you know, our pleasure to serve the community today. So we're happy to continue as long as this is needed.
Bill, maybe we'll start with you. Any questions for either Jackson or Michelle about this agreement?
So first of all, Jackson, thank you for helping us vaccinate our school teachers. I know that you kind of went above and beyond to get that extra vaccine, and you were very responsible. We asked you to do that, so thank you very much. I also wanna let you know, I'm sure you've got the feedback from Tom, but we received some great feedback on the testing site, really since the day you started it. So my compliments and my appreciation to you. You kind of opened that site when we had a definitive need in town, and I thought you've done a great job, so I'm thrilled that we're gonna extend this. My only question for Michelle is, I know that when we signed the original contract with Mr. Stone, we used CARES funding, so I'm assuming that the new federal legislation is gonna cover this as well. Is that correct?
We're still planning to use CARES because we can use CARES through December 31st, but in the unlikely event we run out of that funding, I believe we could use the American Rescue Plan funding that's coming in.
Great. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Joe, questions for Michelle or Jackson?
Yes. Thanks, Michelle, for that report, and Jackson, really appreciate your efforts here. Michelle reported on sort of a decline in tests that we've seen. Is that experience consistent with your experience in other towns?
It's consistent with our experience, and it's consistent with our understanding of the demand across the Board, talking to our, some of our, some of their sites in Massachusetts, and I think it's consistent in a kind of partial decline in the United States as a whole.
Right. And this is a question for either Michelle, Jackson, or perhaps Tom. Have we experienced any traffic issues in terms of people queuing or perhaps disrupting traffic? I've heard of nothing. I just wanna make sure that there's nothing going on there.
No, not that I've heard of, and we did have, we appreciate the police department's help. We had a two-person detail for the first several weeks or months, and we recently decreased that to one person because there haven't been any issues. Jackson, do you wanna?
Yeah, and I'll just comment that that was really helpful in the first weeks. That was the holiday season, and that was, we pushed the, basically, the limit of the number of people we could take through the site with personnel we have during that time, and I think that was the max traffic period, and it didn't seem too bad on the roadway. We certainly, we had some people queuing in line, and since then, it's been fairly consistently low-wait times and not a lot of, not a lot of traffic blocking that intersection or that road.
Great. And one last question. Have you experienced any safety issues with people showing up unmasked or, you know, problems in making sure that the facility is being run safely?
You know, we've had 13,000 people come through, or 13,000 tests. There have been some people that have come in without masks, and we have to tell them to wear masks. We have posted safety rules that we encourage everybody to follow, but I, nothing that stands out to note here.
Great. I mean, it sounds like it's a smooth operation. It's benefiting both the residents and employees of the town, as well as our neighboring towns, and I'm glad we're continuing. So no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, I think this question is for you. In our original agreement, we had the ability that if the need wound down, that we, I think it was a one-week notice period at which we would, that we would discontinue the service. Is that still part of this new agreement?
That's still in the new license agreement, and Jackson sends over daily numbers from his team, so we would likely, you know, kind of look at the trends over time before we made a decision and talk with him and his team about either a further reduction or a cessation of services.
Yeah. You know, it's, there are little signs that life as we know it is sort of resuming, and talking about winding down these services while we really appreciate everything that's been done, I think to me is a sign of progress that we collectively are doing. I just, Jackson, I wanna read you. I got a letter in the mail from a resident, and it was, I received it on February 1st, and this is just an example of several of the letters that the town has received. And while this letter was addressed to me, I actually think it's more appropriate that it should be directed to you. It says, "My husband Dan and I want to thank you for all you did to have the Cushing Street COVID testing site established for Hingham residents and others. Having this site right in our town offered such a gift to those needing testing. After being exposed in January, we made an appointment and were so," triple underlined, "impressed with the facility and the people running it. Thank you so much for taking care of your Hingham residents." Jackson, I know you're also a resident in this community, and, you know, our family, like probably many others on this call or watching the meeting, we have taken advantage of the testing service. It is professionally run, it is professionally managed, it is easy in and easy out, we receive the results very quickly, and, you know, it's, the town and the Board really does owe you a debt of gratitude, and I would echo my colleagues' appreciation, and also I would just, you know, in addition to thanking you for helping vaccinate our teachers, I do wanna mention that our town administrator, Tom Mayo, and executive health officer, Susan Sarni, were really also instrumental in making this happen. Tom and Michelle were kind of working their network, which included Jackson, working hard to find the facilities and, you know, arrange for this. We also understand that 70 vaccinations doesn't cover all our teachers, but we're pleased that we could do what we can, and we're also very grateful to many members of the PTO who worked with our teachers to try to make testing appointments for them in other facilities. So just very, very grateful to all your contributions to Hingham and the professionalism of your team. Is there anyone who has a question or wishes to make a comment before the Board votes to extend this license agreement? If not, I'd accept a motion.
I would make a motion.
Go ahead, Bill.
I'll go. I have a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the extension of license agreement with Empathy LLC for a temporary COVID-19 testing site at 308 Cushing Street for a three-month period commencing March 5th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Mary, aye. Terrific. Terrific. Uh, Jackson, thank you so much. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you so much.
Uh, the next item on the town's agenda, on, on our board's agenda is an FY22 financial forecast update. We're going to do this in a couple parts. Um, uh, Tom Mayo is going to, uh, Tom and Michelle are going to give us an update on the forecast. Um, uh, I'm going to tee up some discussion for the board, um, for us to have a little time to talk about the information we're seeing. And as we always do, we will also open it up for questions and comments from members of the public. Tom, why don't you lead off?
Sure, thank you, Mary. So while Michelle brings the, uh, brings the, the forecast up on the, on the screen, I'll just, uh, start off and initiate the conversation a little bit. So we've done a number of things since the last forecast update. Uh, Michelle will walk us through all of those. We are presenting tonight a, an approach, not necessarily the approach, the right approach, the wrong approach. This is an approach, something that the town should consider and, um, and move, you know, to, you know, one way or another from either adopting this or find something, um, something else that would work. The, uh, Michelle will walk you through all the different changes that have occurred since our last, uh, since our last update. But always just bear in mind, please, that there, that this is just a possible approach. There are many, but this is one.
Good. Thank you, Tom. So if you remember from our last forecast, forecast update, I think on March 8th, we had shown a scenario in which we had removed all of the extra, all of the additional requests from the school and the municipal departments. And we had shown a balanced budget with a surplus of about $274,000. In this scenario, we have put all of those additional requests back in. Um, and so I'll walk through the, some of the different changes to the revenues and expenditures and, and how we did that in this approach. I'll try not to go too far into the weeds on this. So we've tried to highlight some of the, the areas that we've changed. So the first one I'll start with is local receipts. The board voted this past Tuesday night to approve some, some changes and some new transportation fees that are mostly going to affect um, commercial permit holders, but we are estimating the revenue from that to be about $150,000. So we've added that to local receipts for FY22. I'm going to skip fund balance and come back to that. Excess overlay, so the Board of Assessors voted recently to release $225,000 from this account, so we're able to apply that as revenue to FY22 as well. If I drop down to the uses, some of the expenditures. The overlay account, this is where we're budgeting the amount for the senior means-tested property tax exemption. We went back and looked at our numbers, and we made some assumptions. We basically said, let's assume that 90% of the eligible people actually apply this fall um, instead of a full 100%, and we were able to take out $46,000 from that expenditure for this year. I'm going to come back to capital as well. Now, if I come down to the Article 6 budget, this is where all, you know, the municipal and school and all the other budgets are, so let me swing down to the detail. So like I said at the beginning, we added back in the municipal additional requests to the town budget here. We also added back in all of the school requests. So Dr. Austin's number that he, he presented a week or so ago was $61,362,019. There are two sources of school federal funds, let me just jump back up really quick, called ESER 2 and ESER 3. And we're applying the full $1.37 million to the school's FY22 request. The, the number that Dr. Austin had presented before already includes the ESER 2. So this 60.4 million now also includes the ESER 3. Basically, what we're doing there is, instead of funding 1.4 million of the school requests through the tax levy, we're funding it through that federal source of funds. So that's why you don't see it quite in this number. However, in FY22, or FY23, we're adding in um, the cost of those items that are funded through ESER funding this year, minus some one-time expenses and, um, lost revenue, and so we're making sure that we're building in those items in future years to properly reflect those expenditures. We also made some changes to employee benefits, so on health insurance, to account for the additional positions that have been requested in FY22. We needed to add about $175,000 in health insurance, and we also added $25,000 in Medicare. When we looked at the Medicare number a little more closely for the, for the employees who are already in the budget, we were able to take $100,000 out there, so that was a net decrease of $75,000. Billy, I think I'm going really fast, but hopefully everyone is still with me. Let me come back up to the top for a second. All right, so then looking at the fund balance line. This is one-time money, and so we've applied, there are four different things in this number, three of which are truly fund balance, and one is separate. You can see the four numbers up here. The first item that we use fund balance for, this 1.4, that's lost revenue. That's local receipts that we think will bounce back in the future, but that we're not going to collect in FY22. The second number is lost revenue on the school side, and they're revolving funds, same thing, think that will bounce back. So we're able to, to appropriately use fund balance to, to fill that gap one time. The $392,000 that's also in there, that, that's one-time expenses that Dr. Austin identified in his FY22 request. So same thing, we're going to fund that with fund balance because it's one-time, and that won't create a recurring hole. Now, this last number here, this 1.2 million, you see in the blue box here, we were, we recently found out this week, basically, that the town can expect to get $2.4 million from the American Rescue Plan, the federal stimulus. We are proposing to apply half of that in FY22. Um, this is still one-time money, so we are essentially digging a $1.2 million hole. But we're proposing to try to ease ourselves out of that hole by applying $800,000 in FY23 and $415,000 in FY24. So rather than create a $2.4 million hole in '22, we're trying to, to spread it out, but we are making full use of those federal funds. So those are the four numbers in this fund balance line. And then the, applying all of those different changes to the revenue and the expenditures led us to about a $300,000 surplus. One thing we had taken out of this was, um, our request for additional $500,000 in the capital budget, which would have supported municipal and school requests. We had taken that out when we were trying to balance this. But since we had a $300,000-ish dollar surplus, we decided to put $300,000 back in for the capital budget. This would be a one-time infusion of capital for '22, and then the budget increases in '23 in the out-years by the, by the $100,000 that we had already been using, um, every year. So if we make all those changes, we put all their requests back in, we end up with about an $8,000 surplus, a balanced budget. And again, it fully funds the school requests and the municipal requests, with the exception of about $200,000 in capital.
Um, Michelle, uh, thank you. Um, why don't you leave just that up for a minute, if you could? Uh, Joe, do you have any questions for Michelle about the forecast update?
Uh, I do. Uh, Michelle, would you mind just explaining again what the excess overlay is?
Yes, so excess overlay is, so if you look at excess overlay on the top here in the revenue section is basically the counterbalance to overlay on the bottom section. The overlay account, as the expenditure account, is what the assessors use every year to pay tax abatements and exemptions. If they don't use all of that money by the end of the year, it becomes excess overlay that if released, we can apply it to the budget as a revenue.
So, it's a, let me, let me see if I can restate it and if I'm getting it right. So this is, these are funds that were reserved, uh, in case there were abatements. And it turns out there were some abatements, but not as much as we reserved for, so we've got excess funds that we can release.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, so in FY22, if we don't use, oh, sorry, am I? All of this $704,000, they will go into the reserve overlay account, and in the future, they'd be available for supporting future budgets or larger abatement requests, et cetera.
Got it. Um, what does the forecast assume about state aid?
State aid? I believe that assumes, I believe those numbers are from, um, what the governor released. So we were, Mary, do you remember the percentage increase?
Um, it was, it was basically, um, it was about, Joe, a hundred, it was about $115,000 over, over last year. Like, the reason that number is going down is because FY21 is the last year that we were getting reimbursed
Right, right.
from the high school and south school renovations.
Right. Is there any, uh, do we know if there is any additional federal funding that is going to the state that will filter to us, other than what's, what you've reflected in the federal funds coming to us in this forecast?
Besides the CARES money, the 3.6 million that's already been available that we can use through the end of this year, I'm not aware of anything additional.
Yep.
Nothing direct, Joe, that we would be able to use for this, for our budget. There, there will be benefits and services that we'll, that we'll receive, obviously, probably from the state and through the county, but nothing direct for us.
Um, and one, one last question. So I understand that the goal is not to fund recurring expenses with one-time revenue. Um, or, uh, a one-time dip into, into the revenue. Ha, have you succeeded in that, or, or are we still left with some recurring funds, either on the, uh, recurring expenses, either on the school side or the town side, where we are dipping into a one-time source of funds to pay it for next year?
We've applied the fund balance in this plan according to our financial policy, and these three things are one-time expenditures, so that's not creating a hole. But the, but we are using the different federal fundings. Um, those are supporting some recurring requests, unless we choose a different path.
Yeah. Got it. Excellent job. Thank you. No other questions.
Uh, Bill, questions for Michelle on the forecast?
Yeah, so it's, it's helpful that we can spread out the federal money over three years. That is, that's great to know. And, uh, I guess my only question is, I hear you write that, given the, our recent policy change for creating more revenue with the transfer taken, uh, we're predicting $150,000 more?
Yes, we are.
Right. Okay. Right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Uh, Michelle, if, if you could pull up that PowerPoint. One thing I would just mention, um, to, to my colleagues and to the public is that the federal money that is coming through what they're calling the government, and, and our share of that is $2.4 million. We've been told that we will get 50% of that within the next 90 days. So we're only going to get 50% that we can apply to this year, and we're told we're going to get the next 50% in a year. So we are essentially applying everything we're getting, um, in this year. It, it sort of seems like maybe the goal of some of that federal money is to try to spread it out, um, which, which I would also sort of infer is the federal government's way of saying, um, there probably isn't any more coming in the next year. Um, Michelle, if you could just advance the, the, the slide. So, um, Bill and Joe, with, with this as a little bit of a backdrop, what, um, what, what I thought might be helpful tonight for us to do, because we haven't really, you know, we, we haven't had a chance to have a lot of discussion, is really to do a couple of things. First of all, um, we will be voting our budgets on Tuesday. We've been, um, I think, pretty consistent that that's when we're voting our budgets. And I want to make sure tonight that if there's any information that either of you need, um, about the budget, any details about programs or services, any questions you have, um, that if they're not answered tonight in the meeting, Tom and Michelle can capture those and, and help track down the answers. Um, as well, if you have any questions about different options for how to fund this budget. Um, as Tom said at the beginning, what he has shown is one path to balance this budget. Now, you know, we have a couple choices as we vote the budgets next week. Um, we can vote the budget numbers as they are right now. Uh, we can vote numbers that are higher. We can vote numbers that are lower. Um, and I think what I'd also like to do tonight is, is to talk a little bit about some of the implications of our different funding options. Um, you know, the other night, the advisory committee had a discussion, and I think what, what they sort of were doing is, they were giving an indication of kind of where they were, where they were leaning. Um, I'd like us to have a similar conversation so that we can not only inform each other and the public, but potentially the advisory committee as well as, as where we're leaning. Um, I'm not going to ask anybody to take any hard votes tonight, but again, I, uh, I, I think it might be helpful to have the discussion. Slide, please, Michelle? So again, just for, for people to see, this forecast shows a balanced budget. Um, and it basically funds everything that has been requested, with the exception of $200,000 in capital. And it also includes the incremental benefit charges associated with the 36 full-time employees. That's 32 in the school and four for the municipal, uh, that, that would be added to this budget. Um, Michelle just walked through the changes, and so there was about a half a million dollars of changes to the forecast. Um, increased revenue, uh, reduction in costs that, that Michelle just went through in detail. Um, next slide, Michelle. The really big change in this forecast is that we've added about $2.6 million in federal money to this forecast. And that's one-time money. So if you look at Forecast Version 1.3, we had about $2.4 million of one-time money. That was our fund balance. And as Michelle pointed out, that was in compliance with our town financial policy. In Forecast Version 1.4, we are now at $5 million in one-time money. So it's everything that was in Version 1.3 plus, um, ESER, which is the education, the, the education federal money, that came in in two pieces, and the American Rescue Act government funding for 1.2 million. So the, the big way we've gotten this budget balanced is through the use of this federal money, which some would say was the intent of, 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 that was the intention of it. Um, slide, Michelle? Um, a couple caveats. We still don't have a lot of details about the American Rescue Fund and this ESER funding. Um, we've been given some broad parameters of what's allowed and not allowed. But, you know, sometimes the devil is in the details. Um, we don't, we have some broad information about restrictions. For example, you can't use this money to lower taxes. Um, you can use it for COVID relief. Um, there's some stuff that's come out about using it for revenue loss, and I don't know, every time I read it, I kind of, I don't get it. Um, but I would just point out that when we did the CARES Act money, one of the stipulations for the CARES Act is that it doesn't reimburse you for personnel costs for budgeted positions. So that's just an example of, of a restriction that we have to be mindful of. Um, I think we also need to remember that how we kind of package or organize this budget could affect our ability to get federal funding. Um, you know, you've heard our board in, in meetings talking about whether, um, some of the new positions that are being contemplated could be done through contract. If we find out that contract positions are reimbursed and full-time employees are not reimbursed, you know, I, I, I would hope that as an organization, we can, we can adjust as best we can, because I think the goal here is to maximize the federal dollars. And, and one of the reasons I say that is, if, if we adopt this path that Tom just put forward, and let's say that some of that federal money can't be used the way we want, it's coming out of our fund balance. Fund balance, we all, we all have to just be like, again, I'm not saying it's a good thing, a bad thing. We just got to go into this eyes wide open and know that fund balance is our backstop. And, and we have to understand that as those details come out, it may be that fund balance is being used in a way that may not be in conformance with our financial policy. Uh, Michelle, if you could, uh, go to the next slide. So, um, I just want to show you, um, you know, we, we can pull up the sensitivity model if you want, but, um, with, with Forecast Version 1.4, if we assume 2% municipal and education budget growth, we would have a deficit in FY23 of $2.4 million. And, and you see that that deficit grows over the next three years. Um, if we assume a 2.75% municipal budget growth and 4% education budget growth, which is a little bit more in keeping with recent history, our fiscal year '23 deficit jumps up to $3.8 million. So if, if we're going to use one-time money, when Michelle talks about kind of digging ourselves into a hole, this is how big the hole is. And, and I would just say, I, I think, I think right now, we should assume that the hole will be more in the $3.8 million range, because that's, that's kind of how it's historically been spent. So if, if the thought is to adopt the budget as is, to pay for it, to use one-time money in FY22, we would be going to the taxpayers for a $3.8 million override as a starting point. Now, over the next year, there could be actions taken that could reduce that. We could find other sources of revenue. But I would also point out that just as easily, things could get added to that override. Um, additional services. Um, additional services, additional programs that we want to offer. Um, if you go to the next slide, please, Michelle? A- as a way to kind of frame up our discussion and apologies for the small, small print, I, I just kind of tried to lay out what, what I saw as maybe some pros and cons of, of an override this year versus one-time money. Because if, if, if we're going to adopt this budget or a budget very close to what's being proposed, these are our options. Um, an override is a permanent funding source. Uh, it conforms with our town financial policy. Um, however, um, as the advisory committee pointed out the other night, with town meeting in early May, there is a limited amount of time for education and advocacy. Um, and, and some might, might say there isn't enough time. Um, I think another, another consideration here is, you know, if, a- as George Dana said the other day, if the federal government is giving out one point two trillion dollars to help municipalities and governments get through, is this really kind of the right time to promote a tax increase? You know, is, is it sort of at odds with this idea of, you know, this, this money being used, that this money being available to help avoid a tax increase? Um, if we think about one-time money, um, it gives us the advantage of maybe putting COVID in the rearview mirror. It gives us the chances at town to execute a public process, to socialize and educate the community. Um, it gives the town some time to, to start looking at ways to, um, a- a- as I would say, bend the cost curve. Um, I think there's a collective recognition that some of our budgets are growing at an unsustainable rate. And there is discussion that a strategic planning process could help uncover some ways to mitigate that growth. Um, another thing about the one-time money, as Michelle just pointed out, is right now, assuming the federal money can all be used as we think, we're in conformance with our financial policy. And, you know, that's, that's important. Um, what are a couple of downsides of one-time money? Um, as Michelle said, it digs a hole. It's about a, a three point eight million dollar hole. And, you know, the, the question Bill and Joe, I think we have to ask ourselves is, you know, is, is it fiscally responsible? Um, you know, this kind of isn't how I operate my personal budget. And I like to think I, I apply the, those same principles to taxpayer dollars. Um, it only provides a one-year funding source for these new services, most of which are personnel. And, you know, a year from now, as we're contemplating an override, there is the potential for layoffs. Um, if there's an override being contemplated, we may have to give out reduction in force letters in accordance with.
Mary? I've lost you.
Yeah, we lost you, Mary.
I've seen a community then figuring out how to allocate surplus dollars is, is to figure out how to cut services. Um, another consideration is, will it be more difficult to get town meeting approval for a, a, a recovery budget a year after COVID? Hopefully, a year after COVID. Um, there's still some unknowns with the federal dollars. And I guess the bottom line here is we are spending an additional two point six million dollars to defer an override question for a year. And is it, you know, i- is that something we want to do? Um, we had talked about using excess fund balance to defray the cost of foster school. If we use it to prop up some of this budget, it's not available for that use. There's a, there's a trade-off there. Uh, Michelle, if you could go to the next slide? Um, a couple of additional considerations, and I know Bill and Joe, we've all talked about this. We are all mindful of foster school. Um, we have all been clear that it's our top priority. And, you know, the, the question I'm struggling with is which path is the least risky? Which path, which path best protects the community's support for foster? Um, there is the potential for COVID on budgeted expenses. I do think if we take the path of one-time money, we have to be really upfront with people and say, we will be coming to you with an override next year. And, and, and I think we maybe need to kind of scale it for people. And I, I think the last kind of consideration, again, that I'm trying to think about is, um, if, if, if we're going to ask the town for an override, is it more likely to be successful this year for, for FY twenty-two or a year from now for FY twenty-three? And, you know, the, 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 those are kind of the, you know, s- some questions that I think we're all looking at. Um, Michelle, if you could go to the last slide. So, you know, with, with the forecast as a backdrop, with some of that information, um, you know, I, I, I'd like us to have a discussion, as I said, to talk about information we might need prior to a vote on Tuesday. And then some discussion about these different funding options. Um, I'm interested in hearing kind of where, you know, i- i- if, if you're inclined in one direction or another, what thoughts you have. Um, I, I think that discussion will help us all and it'll give us time to think about it before making votes on Tuesday. Um, so, uh, Joe, I might, I might kind of lead off, lead off with you if I, if I could.
Sure. Um, so this is, this is certainly a lot to digest. Um, I think the, um, the socialization of an override, uh, which was raised, uh, at AdCom and as well as tonight, is important. Uh, I think to have a meaningful, community-wide discussion, uh, we need to get the information out there. And I'm, I'm not confident that we have the time with the town meeting coming up relatively shortly, uh, to do that. Um, so I, I see the benefit, um, of putting it off. But there, there is the, obviously, the cost of, of digging a bigger hole. Um, the other, um, point that, that I'm thinking about is that if, if we were to do an override this year, it, it is taking funds, taking money from residents and giving it to the town. And doing it next year, we will be taking essentially the same money we would have had to take this year plus more to make up for the override. And so it's not as if it's more money next year, it's just accumulation. And I'm thinking that this year, in, in light of how COVID has affected a number of individuals' incomes, uh, job security, uh, that I would rather leave the funds with the residents this year. Um, knowing that we would be asking next year. But again, it's, it, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not more. It's simply adding what we would have taken this year to what, in addition, what we're going to need next year.
Right. It, it, I, at, at a starting point, it really will be about the same.
Right.
The, the question, Joe, in a year is, is whether there would be a desire from the town to add more things to it.
Right. Um, well, then, then it'll be a larger override.
Yep.
How would, uh, and we've talked about this before. Um, the impact on the average resident, not only of an override, but of the debt exclusions, uh, associated with foster school and the public safety facility.
Yeah.
So, I mean, those are all big items. Um, it's, um, this is tough. I, I think, um, if you, you asked for additional information, uh, I, we should have a discussion, um, just to make sure that this, and I know the schools are aware, but just the, the importance of, to the extent that, um, job positions can be contract rather than, uh, regular employees may not only bring in more money for the town, but give us more flexibility going forward.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, those are my initial thoughts here.
Yeah. Um, Tom Mayo, do you just, um, today in our, in our forecast, forecast group meeting, there was a little bit of discussion about, um, uh, we, we had asked Dr. Austin about contract positions. Did you maybe just want to give Joe an update?
Sorry, he's, uh, uh, Dr. Austin this afternoon told us that he was looking specifically at three positions. Uh, I forget the titles of the positions, but he believed that there was a possibility of moving two of those three to contract and keeping one as an FTE. Uh, but he would, he would, um, make that determination and, and notify us in the near future.
Yeah, but it, I, I'm not seeing that as a material impact here. I mean, how many positions are we talking about total?
Thirty-six.
Thirty.
Now, how many?
Thirty, thirty-two on the schools.
Right, thirty-two.
Thirty-two FTE.
Maybe, maybe two out of the thirty-two?
Yes.
Uh, that's not what we need. Um, at least that's not, given these numbers, I think we're going to need more flexibility. Um, so, uh, I, I understand that there are institutional constraints. Uh, but this, I think, is the time we need to figure out how to be flexible. We need to get the services in and we need to get the revenues coming into the town.
Okay. Um, thank you, Joe. Uh, Bill, uh, reactions, thoughts, information you need, thoughts on these paths?
Thanks for putting these, um, my first question, I looked at the federal legislation.
I was having trouble hearing you.
I, I looked at the, I looked at the federal legislation myself, and I agree with you that it's, it's a little confusing. It does speak to learning loss. And it speaks to municipalities addressing learning loss with the federal money. Um, given the fact that we do have some outstanding questions that are pretty important to our path forward. Uh, Tom, do we know when we might get some clarity on some of the issues Mary identified specifically in terms of can we use this money to hire full-time staff?
Yeah, so I spoke at length with, uh, with some of the management team over at the town, over at Plymouth County, who, uh, told me a couple of things. One is they're contemplating, um, trying to administer this act, uh, the way they did with the CARES Act. Um, but also, as a result of that, they've done a fair amount of research on their own. And they're telling us that they have been told by the federal government, uh, agencies that are responsible for this to, that they would be providing, um, more consumable, um, feedback and guidance as early as next week. Uh, he didn't know when, he was hoping it would be next week. It would, I doubt it will be before Tuesday. Hopefully, it would be before Thursday when AdCon votes, but i- it's coming.
So, uh, thank you. So, you know, my thoughts of, on this, uh, Mary, as of about a week ago, was to go for the override this year and to increase the levy to address the, the needs identified by the school budget. Um, but, you know, with the, I guess, over the course of the last week and seeing this develop and seeing these pass forward, I now tend to agree with George, and I think, I think I'm getting the sentiment possibly from you as well, um, that we cannot, we cannot ask residents to raise taxes and leave federal money on the table. You know, we need to use every single dollar that we can get to assist, uh, our schools with the needs identified. So with that in mind, the path to laying it is now, for me, the better path. Part of me thinks we're kind of putting, um, doing so and not increasing the levy, we're kind of putting a, a Band-Aid on a wound that requires a tourniquet. But, um, I think that's probably going to be the best path forward. That's probably the path I'm going to support. Um, my only concern with that is pushing a, a potentially larger override to twenty-two or twenty-three would be buttressing that up against, uh, the request for foster school, uh, which is probably our number one capital need in town. Now, I think, I think both are, well, are reasonable requests. Um, I just don't know how residents are going to feel if we ask them for an override in the spring of twenty-two and we come back after the, our MSBA work in the fall of twenty-two and say, now we need a debt exclusion to build a school that, uh, we should have fixed thirty years ago. Um, but this is helpful and I appreciate, uh, the time that you, Tom, Michelle have put into laying out what lies ahead. Thank you.
Um, let me ask you both a question, just, just sort of based on, uh, the, thank you, this is really helpful. Um, be- before I kind of share some thoughts, um, it, it sort of sounds to me like both of you are inclined to support the budgets that have been put forward to us. Is that, I mean, again, we're, we're not going to vote final dollars next week, but, but just given the conversation, am I correct in inferring that you support the budget request put forward by the superintendent and the town administrator?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Yeah. And, you know, I'm, I, I'm, I'm right there with you. And, you know, I, I know there's folks on kind of a call here. Um, and many of you have been going along on this journey with us. Um, I, I want to make it clear that, that this board is, is, supports the budgets that have been put forward to us for funding. The discussion we're having now is how to best fund those. And, you know, i- i- it, I, I know for many people, this has felt like kind of a long journey. Part of our process is to understand what revenue we have available, what it means. We, we have to do our job and, and really kick the tires on these budgets because we're going to be standing up at town meeting in several weeks, advocating for, you know, either an override this year or next year. And we need to be able to do that and let the taxpayers know that we have really kicked the tires on all these requests. So again, I know it's, it's, it's felt long. Um, it is, it is an iterative process. Joe, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, um, a couple of things. First, I, I have some questions, um, uh, that I will send, uh, to you or to Tom to, um, really go over, you know, s- some, some topics with respect to the schools. It's not really, um, the question of supporting their budget, but to make sure I understand certain issues there.
Sure.
But one, one thing that Bill said, and I want to make sure I, I understand, I thought I heard Bill saying that if we, his concern that if we did an override this year, it might mean that we would not receive all of the federal money that might be available. Um, I, I'm not sure, i- is that, Bill, is that, was that one of your concerns?
No, it's not. My, my concern is, uh, doing an override this year when we have such a plentiful supply of federal funds coming. I, I wonder, I kind of wonder how taxpayers might say, you're asking for a property tax increase, but yet you have federal money that doesn't look like you may not be using.
Wait, well, so if, if we're not using it, I'm not sure we're entitled to receive it.
What we would do, Joe, is in, in that case, in that case, um, there, there would be other ways that we could use it. And, and by the way, we have until twenty twenty-four to use it.
Okay.
But again, I, I think, I think it would kind of look funny to say, can we, can we raise your taxes? Um, because we don't want to spend this federal money for two more years. Um,
Right.
I think, you know.
Right. And, and the que- the question there is, in whose pocket should, uh, individuals' money be while it's being held? Should it be held with other families or with the, with the town? And I think especially this year, it should be held with families.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, I, I, I hear where you're both coming from on this. Um, it, um, the, the, the part that I'm a little bit uncomfortable with, um, is, is that this is really putting a forced choice on, on the town next year and saying, unless you do this, we're going to have to kind of lay all these people off. And if, if I put myself, and I will be in the audience at town meeting, kind of hearing that, um, it, I just think it means from the town, you're sort of starting out from a, a negative position. It's kind of a, hey, we, we, we can't pay the bills that we have. And, um, I, I think the other thing that I am mindful of is that while the, the tax increase that would come from a special town meeting in the fall of next year wouldn't hit until twenty twenty-five, it's two asks within about a hundred and twenty days. And so even if, even if that tax, that second tax increase doesn't hit for a while, um, it's, it's two asks in a short period of time. And again, I, I just really don't want us to jeopardize foster school. So I, I don't think it's insurmountable. Um, but, uh, it, it just, it, 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 it's not ideal to me. Um, I think there's another piece that is important to me as we go forward, which is that if we are going to put off an override for a year and use this one-time money, um, we've talked in the forecast group about part of our planning efforts, um, focused, uh, on the town side at looking at additional short-term revenue sources. And in particular, in the school department, at, at what some of the advisory committee members call kind of bending. And in particular, in the school department, at, at what some of the advisory committee members call kind of bending the cost curve, which is basically, we've had a school budget that has been, the status quo budget has been growing by about four and a half percent every year, and that's just not sustainable. I don't know that it'll ever get to two or two and a half, but it can't stay at four and a half. And to me, I could see myself supporting the use of one-time money and an override for next year, but to me, I would need to see commitments from all of us that we would be doing our part over the next year so that when an override is presented to the town, we've taken all the steps we can to mitigate it. And that we can demonstrate to the town that we are, that we are right-sized and that our, you know, we, we don't have a, we don't have an imbalance between our revenues and expenses. I think in our forecast group meetings, um, members of the school committee and school administration have, have, have talked about that being part of the scope of the work, um, which I, I am encouraged to hear. And, and I know that that will, that will take some time and some work. Uh, Bill, you wanted to jump in?
You know, Mary, when you brought up those scenarios, and maybe I didn't read them too correctly, but I, I kind of saw a possibility after twenty-three with one-time money. Is that possible? I know, I know it's gonna rip against the fiscal policy, but it looks like there is a possibility of using one-time money to get to twenty-three or twenty-four.
Yeah, so if we, if we wanted to do that, Bill, in twenty-three, we would need another three-point-eight million dollars in one-time money. And that, that, there isn't enough federal money, so we would be dipping into fund balance to the tune of about two-point-six million. And so, we would be using a total of eight-point-eight million dollars in one-time money over two years. I would say that that application would not be in conformance with our financial policy. And, you know, again, I, I, you know, I also do, I think, again, that you, um, if, if, if we ta, if we took that path and tried to bridge for two years, there would be no excess fund balance to defray the cost of the project. And, you know, if, if you're talking about a hundred-million-dollar debt exclusion, that's about a thousand-dollar property tax hit to the average assessed value house. If we can bring down those first couple of years, um, it, it could really make a difference. But, anyway, in answer to your question, it would be another three-point-eight million.
Okay. I know we're well, we're well above our target though, right? So, it's, it's there. Which there, we're just gonna kick the tires a little more, right?
Yeah, I, I would, I would say, Bill, that, yeah, three, three point, another three-point-eight, um, it might, it might be, again, if, if you look at, if you look at the excess, um, taking another three-point-eight out after this year taking two-point-six, um, you would, you would be bucking up against your limit. So... Yeah.
I, I think, I think, Mary, I mean, both, um, on the town side and the school side, there's been a real good demonstration of the need for the funding this year. And I think we're all in agreement that, that we're supporting it. It's, it's the growth rate, really, that you're talking about. You know, basically, we had a recovery budget from the school, and now we need to think about what a long-term sustainable growth rate is, having achieved that recovery. And I think that is, you know, where we need to emphasize our, our attention, is managing the growth. Because that will mean if it's a three-point-eight, four-point-eight, or whatever the amount is, that we do need to keep it to a sustainable level.
Yes, yes. And, um, and, and my, my understanding is that part of the scope of a strategic planning effort next year would, would include, would include taking a look at that.
Are, are you chairing that effort, Mary?
Nah, I don't think so.
You'd be the chairman of the board's designated.
So, so in terms of, in terms of information for Tuesday, in terms of either, um, information about, you know, any specifics about programs or services or the budget or funding options, Joe, it sounds like you may have a, a couple of specific questions that you might, might route to Tom for, for the school department. Is there anything else prior to Tuesday that you would need in order to, um, in order to vote? Because, because Bob Curley really wants to vote next week. And, and I think, I really don't think there's a whole lot more new information that we're gonna get. I think it's time to vote.
I, I agree. I think the most important piece of information you've given us, which is the spreadsheets, we can plug in our own numbers and make our own assessments and see what the implications are. So, um, I'm comfortable that, that we're gonna be positioned to vote next Tuesday.
Okay. And Tom, if you could, when, when Joe get, when you get answers for Joe's questions, if you could please, you know, circulate those to Bill and myself as well, I think that would be great. Bill, any, excuse me, anything else that you've got?
I'll be ready to vote next Tuesday, and any information that comes on the federal funds, Tom, you could get those out to us quickly, that'd be helpful.
Will do.
Tom, in terms of the, the format of the vote next Tuesday, what, what I might ask is that, um, we, uh, you know, with Sue Nickerson's help, prepare that TA budget recommendations document that basically lists, you know, the, the twenty-one and the twenty-two, the additional requests. And I would also ask that we, in doing that, if, if we're going to be voting a school budget number that is net of any sort of federal funding, I think we wanna note that. And I think we wanna note that the gross funding level so that, um, so that it's very clear that the actual spending level is, I think it's sixty-one-point-four million, but with, with some of the money being funded through the, the stimulus. But I think, I think it would be good for us to have that document that ties to the forecast so that we're clear. Bill and Joe, I'd also let you know that the capital outlay committee has, um, uh, they met earlier this week, and they made recommendations if additional capital funding was available. So, um, Tom or Michelle, if you could potentially ask Eric Allen time, I know that Capital Outlay identified items with a total value of five-hundred-thousand dollars. So, we're gonna have to ask them if they could please prioritize to three-hundred. They are gonna, they're, they're gonna have to cut a little. But, uh, that would fund, that would give us three-hundred-thousand dollars across the town for additional capital outlay.
Can do.
Yep, Mary?
Okay, yes.
I have a percentage question. I thought I heard you say that in terms of the new federal money, that fifty percent will be coming in this year, within the next ninety days, and then another fifty percent a year from now. But I thought we were, that we were planning on spending, what, eighty percent this year?
Fifty percent.
Fifty.
Oh, oh, okay. I, I thought there was an imbalance in the percentages. Oh, it matches?
No, so, yeah, it matches. And then in, um, what Tom is proposing in twenty-three is eight-hundred-thousand dollars, and then in twenty-four, four-hundred-fifteen, to kind of, you know, to, to, to manage the whole a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. At this point, I think I'm gonna, um, open it up to questions or comments from the public. If you were interested in being heard, um, I'm gonna ask that you please raise your hand. If you could please give your name and address for the record, and if you could please direct, uh, your questions and comments to the chair, that would, uh, that would be great. I'll recognize Dave, Dave, I messed up your name two weeks ago, and I apologize. I see you smiling, so you know, you know I'm recognizing you. If you could introduce yourself, uh, thank you and welcome.
Sure, and, yeah, Dave B. is fine. Um, Dave Bowyer, eighteen, eighteen Massail. And, so my question was, um, and, and I, I do appreciate, this is a really good meeting, insightful. I think I understand the issues of the one-time, uh, funds versus, versus the continuation. That the options for funding seem to be presented as either or, um, either one-time funds or an override. Since the one-time funds seem to be able to be spread out, whether it's the, the federal money or the, or the fund balance, could those be spread out further into future years? Allow for a more modest override now, and then a more modest override, say, in four years? And, and essentially make any incremental tax levy for the average person two small bumps over four or five years as opposed to one big bump either today or one big bump two years from now?
Yeah. Um, I think, Dave, the answer to your question is, is yes. As long as the funds have to be expended by the end of twenty-twenty-four. And, and the school eser funding has to be expended by September of twenty-twenty-three. It's, it is certainly, it certainly is a consideration. I, I will say that my, my colleagues talk about, you know, leaving, leaving the money in the pockets of the taxpayers this year is, is kind of resonating, but it is, it is certainly an option. Thank you.
If I can follow up-
I'm sorry, Mr. Bowyer, you want, you have something to add?
No, I, I, sorry, am I on?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry. So, I was just gonna say, and I'm all for leaving it with the taxpayers as well. With the understanding as well that a larger increase always may be harder to pass.
Right, right. And, you know, yeah.
Swallow.
Yeah, you know, the, the, and the hard part, too, is, is, you know, how many tax increases within a four- or five-year period, and people say, like, I'm done, I'm out. And, and again, whether, whether we agree with it or disagree with it, Hingham has not had an override in about, in about thirteen years. And, you know, some would say, well, may, maybe we should have had them more frequently. It, with this community, um, a number of overrides in a short period of time, people will not have experienced here. And, and at some point, people are just gonna go, like, I'm out. And, um, it's, it's hard to know what that point is. And, and certainly, I think we can all agree that we don't want that to happen when foster school is being, uh, given its consideration. So, thanks, thanks for your comments. Um, Matt Cosman?
Matt Cosman, welcome to my drive. Thanks for this presentation and discussion. I do, I found it very helpful. And, uh, I appreciate you guys kind of digging into all the different options here, as well as publicly stating support for, uh, funding schools. I think that's incredibly important. Uh, I have one question, and then maybe one comment if I have time. Mary, can you just talk a little bit more? I was, I was getting a little bit lost on when, um, when Joe was talking about using fund balance, I think it was Joe, uh, again next year, and you were referencing pushing us up against our limit. Is that a, my, my question is, is that a, a advisory policy limit or kind of just theoretically, like, what we're comfortable with? Can you just talk a little bit more about what?
Sure. Sure, thank you. And I think it was, um, I think Bill Ramsey was asking about,
Sorry, Bill.
Can we, you know, can we bridge two years? And the answer is that if we wanted to bridge two years, again, assuming a two-point-seven-five and a four percent growth in the budgets, it would require eight-point-eight million dollars in one-time money. Five million next year, and another three-point-eight million the following year. That three-point-eight, and, and Matt, I was doing this math in my head, so take it for what it's worth, for math on a Thursday night in your head. If you look at that three-point-eight million, we would have another one-point-two left in federal money. Okay, so if we use that, we'd be down to two-six. If we used our fund balance, excess fund balance, that, we would be using it to fund ongoing expenses, which is, which is out of bounds with our town financial policy. And a question that we'd have to look at is whether using that extra couple million dollars would result in our, our, us falling below that twenty percent threshold, which is the upper limit of our policy. And when Moody's, when Moody's rated us, uh, when we purchased the water company, one of the things that they said in their report about what could make the town's bond rating go down is if our fund balance kind of dips below that twenty percent level. And so, we would have to do the math. And so, I, I would just say, we, we, if we wanted to consider that, we should do the math.
That's helpful. That, that, that clarifies for me. And then-
Yeah.
And then real quick-
You had a comment.
Yeah, just, just a, a comment. You, you mentioned, and I, um, you mentioned in one of your comments that, it's the board's responsibility to be fiscally responsible, which, uh, I understand and, and makes a lot of sense. I do think it's the board's and all of our responsibilities as, as residents of Hingham to take into account for the kids and really just being kind of, what is our moral, moral responsibility to providing them the services that they need to thrive and learn? And so, I, I, I know you have a, a child still in the school system. I know Bill has, uh, several or many, uh, in the school system. And, and so, I, I know you do that, but I, I would, I'd ask that you, um, sort of keep that lens on just, just as much of the fiscal responsibility.
Sure. Well, and, and what I'm really hoping tonight, that, that people are seeing is that the, that this, you know, what the board is talking about doing is, is doing just that. Because, you know, as, as you heard me talking earlier, this is, you know, some, some might say that this is not the most fiscally responsible thing to do. And I, you know, what I hope people are seeing is you're attending the advisory meetings and the school committee meetings and the board meetings, is that in, in these roles, we try very hard to balance all the different needs of all our citizens. And those needs, and, and they really vary depending on, um, people's circumstance, where people are in their life stage. And, you know, one of the things that we do hear from people, and we hear a lot from people, particularly seniors, is that it's getting harder and harder to stay in Hingham. And we hear people, and I, I got a letter the other day from a woman who, you know, said, it's just getting harder and harder for me to live here because the, the cost of living here keeps going up. I'm a little overwhelmed by some of the things I'm hearing about. And so, we're, we're really trying to sort of balance all those different pieces. And, you know, I, I wanna thank you, and I wanna thank the, the people who write us because, um, you help us know what's important to you, and you guide us in, in determining that right balance. I know in a lot of these discussions that they're very numbers-focused. I can assure you to all three of us, there are faces and people behind all these numbers, and we, we, we take that responsibility very seriously. And I hope our vote tonight demonstrates, I, I mean, I hope our discussion tonight demonstrates that we are hearing what the community is saying, and we are trying to be responsive to our colleagues who have the very important responsibility of educating our children. So, thank you. I'm gonna, uh, recognize, I see the last name is Silva. Hi, Ms. Silva, welcome.
Hi, Rebecca Silva, Three Stone Gate Lane. I just wanted to thank you for calling me right away, because I wanted to piggyback on what you just said, Mary, which was, as you've heard from many seniors, and I, I wanna first say, I'm super happy to hear that the Board of Selectmen is, um, advocating for the school, for the full school budget, recovery budget, first of all. I just wanna piggyback on to say, as many seniors as you've heard from, about it's getting harder and harder to, to live in Hingham and to afford it, and I hear that, and I empathize with that, and I, I can only imagine how difficult that is. It's equal to, um, for me as a parent, to continue to keep my children in Hingham Public Schools with the level of services that has been happening over the last several years. I have a child, um, receiving special ed services. I have children at the middle school level, and I have two children at the high school level. And it, it really is getting every year more and more difficult to keep my children enrolled in Hingham Public Schools. And I am a Hingham, I am, I'm a public school advocate. I grew up in public schools. My husband grew up in public schools. I, it's becoming very challenging, so, uh, and I think that maybe we, as parents, need to keep vocalizing every year about that so that you are, you, so that you're hearing the other side of it as well. And I think that our, our young citizens have- And I think that our, our young citizens have dared the brunt of this pandemic, as well as are the culprits of the level funding that's happened for the school budget over the last several years. And it's catching up to us and it, it's tough. The other thing that I would say is, in terms of the growth, is I really feel like it may be time somewhere in this override process. I understand now, after tonight's meeting, I thank you for why maybe right now isn't the best time. Um, about a bigger piece of the pie for the schools out of the town that would need to possibly reprioritize as a town. So, thank you for your time and service.
Thank you, um, thank you very much. I, um, uh, we appreciate hearing from people, um, about, you know, their experiences and, you know, sometimes the, the struggles here in Hingham. Um, one thing that I would note, just, you know, and, and again, I appreciate, you said a lot of great things that I, uh, um, I do want to mention that, you know, if we look at, if we look at, if we look at Hingham's pie, um, 3% more of our pie is spent on education today than our benchmark communities. And, you know, I know there's been a lot of talk about benchmarking and we're not gonna get into benchmarking tonight, but I, I would say that I think that this community by and large has really supported education. Um, I understand that, that there are many who would like to see, um, you know, e- even more of a commitment. I think the, the budget that's under consideration, um, is, is demonstrating a strong commitment. I, I think the other piece I would just throw out there is, my hope in Hingham is that as we go along in this, everybody rises up a little bit more. Um, you know, and, and maybe there are times when, you know, some groups rise up a little bit more than others, but I, I would like to think that as a community, um, we can, you know, we can all kind of rise together. Um, because, uh, people experience Hingham in different ways, so, uh, so thank you. Uh, Priya Howell?
Priya Howell, 26 Dell Prep. Um, thank you, Mary. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, thank you. I, I really appreciate your, um, support of the school recovery budget. Um, I just had a, a question. Um, you know, we've talked about doing either, uh, an override or relying on federal funds. And I just had a question. My understanding is, you know, we would have to present two budgets, essentially one if an override passes and one if an override didn't pass. So my question is, could we present a budget this year that says, you know, we're gonna use federal funds to fully fund the town administration budget and the school, uh, department budget? Um, and that's what we'll do if an override doesn't pass. But alternatively, we're gonna put an override to the town and let the voters decide if this is a good year to pass an override or not. And if the override did pass, either, um, you know, use those federal funds for a different purpose? Or could we, um, you know, hold off a year in implementing the override and actually collecting it? I'm not sure how that works.
Um, so let me try to answer. There are a couple of questions in there, so I'm, I'm gonna actually start with the last piece, um, which is that we cannot, if, if we ask the voters for an override, we have to start collecting it right away. And we can't collect money and then hold it aside. We basically have to say, you know, this is an override and this is what we're gonna use it for, and then we have to use it for that. So we, we can't, we can't pass an override for the future. Um, you know, again, there, there are different, there are, there are a couple paths we could take here for this year. Um, I think what I'm hearing from my colleagues and from the advisory committee is, uh, is, is leaning towards using the one-time money and not asking for a tax increase at this time. Um, and I, you know, I, I think another goal that we've had, uh, Priya, since we started this, is that the Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Committee and the School Committee could all be aligned going into town meeting. Um, the Board of Selectmen are the only ones with the authority to put an override down the ballot. Um, I, I, I can't speak for my colleagues, but if, if we and the School Committee and Advisory Committee are aligned on one-time money, um, I would, I would want us to go into town meeting together. Uh, because I think when we go to town meeting together, we are, um, uh, we are more effective. Um, did, did you have another question? I, I, I see your hand is up and I didn't know if you had another question.
No, I, I just couldn't unmute myself. I just wanted to respond. Um, I, I think, I understand that and, and that makes sense. And I certainly can, can see the reasoning behind why we would do that. Um, I, I guess I would just, you know, put out there for everyone to think about, uh, essentially an override is up to the town. And we've heard, actually, Mary, I think in one of your presentations, that in some towns, it doesn't pass on the first try. So, you know, maybe this isn't the year for an override and the voters could say that if they don't feel like it's the year for an override. And if they say that, you know, we have these federal funds as a fallback position. Um, but then maybe it would make it more likely to pass, you know, the second time around. So just something that I throw out there as a.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
I do wanna say, you know, the most important thing for all of us is funding the school recovery budget, whether it's this year, um, you know, with one-time money and an override in the future, or an override now. And, and we thank you guys for supporting that. And these guys who have just wandered into my office, thank you too.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, and, you know, part of the reason for having this discussion tonight, um, as I said, we will not be voting until Tuesday night, but this gives us a chance to hear from one another. This gives us a chance to hear from all of you. Um, and certainly, uh, this also, uh, can inform the Advisory Committee, uh, who are, you know, who are meeting concurrently. Um, is there anyone else who has a question or wishes to make a comment with respect? Uh, Leslie Whitman?
Yes. Hi, Mary. Um, I, I just wanted to make a comment.
Ms. Whitman, could you just give your name and address for the record, please? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, no. Uh, Leslie Whitman, 1 Rocky Run. Um, I, I, I know, I've been listening to these meetings a lot over the past couple of weeks and there's a lot of talk of like, how, um, raising taxes is gonna be received by the public. And one of the things that has occurred to me, excuse me, is that there isn't a lot of discussion, there's a lot of discussion about the need to fund this recovery budget and sort of the moral imperative that was, um, touched on earlier to, you know, give our children education that they deserve. But there's also, I think, um, another way to put it, which is that our property values depend greatly on, you know, these schools that we have, the school that we have, the, the different schools in our district, um, maintaining their good reputation and the great job that they've been doing. Um, because I do, I, I, this, what you said earlier about people getting upset about, potentially about multiple overrides and sort of saying, "I'm outta here." Um, I feel like I've been hearing talk similarly about people's ideas about the schools and the town and not feeling supported by the town for their children. And I have, you know, friends and neighbors who are saying, "I told people not to move here." Um, I know, obviously, the real estate market is very hard right now in Hingham, but I think, you know, part of that is contingent on our schools staying strong. And so it sounds like you guys are, are all behind the budget, which is so wonderful to hear and really, you know, is what we've been fighting for. But, um, maybe going forward, there's more discussion with the general public about the need to do this. And it's not just about, not just about the kids and the moral imperative. It's about protecting your property values as well. And this benefits everyone in the town.
Sure. And, you know, um, Ms. Whitman, I, I just add that in, you know, in, in my former life, before I was a town volunteer, um, I led the Friends of Hingham Public Schools. I led the override effort, uh, the debt exclusion to build these schools, the override effort to open it. It was two tax increases in about 18 months. And, you know, at the time, I, I kind of wasn't sure what was gonna happen. And I was so impressed that I believe that this is a community that values education. And I think when people are presented with the facts and the information, um, and I, I do think that there is, um, there is overall support. I think you have people who are, you know, understand that maybe their children went through the school system and it's a, um, you know, i- i- they had the benefit. But I, I do think this is a community that, that does value education. And I think as, you know, if, if we're gonna embark next year on a conversation about an override, um, I really do see an opportunity to have a community conversation that kind of, you know, can be positive for everybody because, um, I, I, I do think that that's how they've been successful in the past. And even if you're not a homeowner with children enrolled in the public school system, um, you know, that there are some potential benefits. And, um, I, I guess what I'm saying is that I, I know in some communities, these override discussions, when they happen, can get kind of divisive and stuff. Um, I, I think in Hingham, we've been fortunate so far that it hasn't, it hasn't gotten that way. And that would certainly be my hope, uh, going forward. Um, and I, as I said, I think we have a community that, that values education and our public school system and, um, and, and we can have those conversations. So, uh, so thank you. Uh, Diane Denapoli?
Good evening, Mary. Diane Denapoli, 16 Gardner Street. Um, I wanna thank you and the other Selectmen for discussing the balance that I think we're trying to achieve. Um, I think obviously, fully funding the schools. Your indication that you're receptive to that is gonna be, um, very well received. I have a question. I don't know if this is possible. If the budget, the recovery budget, is fully funded this year at the level Dr. Austin had requested, is it possible to add as a caveat that the growth moving forward for the school budget will not exceed a certain number, say 4.5 or 5%? Because I think as you and, and, uh, Slavon Fisher indicated, it's the growth on an annual basis that seems to be compelling us into a very perilous financial situation. So if, if you might be able to address, is that possible to maybe make, uh, some comfort for people like seniors and other people who may be very concerned about the long-term financial status of the town? Is there any conditions we can put on a collective growth for the town to better, um, swallow this pill, so to speak? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Diane. Um, you know, my impression would be that if, if we, if we go along this path with one-time money, that what you're suggesting would be the part, would be part of the s- scope of, of, of the override discussions for next year. And, um, and I think that, you know, it would be, it would be reasonable to assume that part of the scope might involve, um, you know, town department, town and school departments making growth commitments, uh, in, in some fashion. I think the advantage of undertaking the strategic planning effort and internalizing the master plan, uh, that's just been developed, is it gives us the ability to sort of use that information to set those targets, understand what they are. Um, so I, I would see that as part of the scope for next year. And I think what you're hearing in particular from Joe and I is that, is that that is an important part of why they are supporting the path to use one-time money and to fully fund these requests for this year. Uh, anyone else? Okay, um, you know what, just as, uh, Joe?
Yeah, Mary, um, thank you. Um, I gotta tell you, I've been thinking about what Dave B. had to say about whether or not we do a modest override this year. So that we have a foundation and that it will be less of an impact, uh, next year. And I, I, I'm, I really appreciate his comments. I'm gonna give that, uh, further thought. And to respond more specifically, uh, to Diane Denapoli, I, I thought she was really asking whether or not there could be some sort of binding commitment as, as part of the, um, the process here, that the growth rate would be kept at a particular percent. And I think the answer is no. Um, what we're talking about is getting commitments, but not in a legal sense. We're not gonna have a binding, uh, restraint either on the schools or on the town to, to limit the growth. It, it's something we all have to work for.
Thank you. Um, Bill, any, anything else to add?
Good discussion tonight. Appreciate the time, putting, putting, um, putting everything together.
Yeah, you know, I, I just, um, as, as we close this discussion, um, you know, we will be taking our vote on Tuesday night. Um, I, I wanna thank everybody who's here and everybody who has, um, participated either by writing a letter, engaging in a meeting. Um, I think that one of the, one, one positive byproduct of this pandemic is that we have seen more citizen engagement in our town government. Um, you know, I think there's a, there's an open question in Massachusetts about, is there a way that we can continue to adopt this remote participation? Because, um, you know, you, usually when we're meeting in person, there, there aren't a lot of people in the meeting rooms. And, um, I, I just really appreciate the time investment that people are taking into, you know, educating yourself about your community, about your town finances, um, engaging and letting us know what's important. And equally important, um, I, I would also say that with, within our meetings, um, everybody who is engaged with us has just been, um, thoughtful and respectful. And we really appreciate, we really appreciate that. It's, it's a lot easier to, um, uh, we hear you more when that happens. And, um, I, I think that if, if, if people are watching these meetings, uh, you know, if you look at some of these meetings in other communities, they sometimes get a little bit rough and tumble. Um, and I, I think the manner in which we're having these challenging conversations, listening to one another, um, you know, not always agreeing, but being respectful in our disagreement, um, I think has been a hallmark of Hingham. And I'm just so appreciative of all the citizens that have, uh, helped us to have this very civil discourse. And I, I hope that this really does set the table for the conversations we're gonna have in the next year, uh, as well. Um, so with that, uh, so the only other thing on our agenda is public comment on any items not on the agenda. And so seeing none, uh, I would actually take a motion to adjourn for this evening.
Don't move. One second.
Any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary, aye.